All right, good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 a.m. Let's go ahead and get started. Will you please join me? I stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful winter day, and we thank you for this community, Lord, and for Christmas time, and for just the positive attitudes of our citizens. We thank you for protecting us during this COVID mess since last March, and we just pray, Father, that the numbers will continue to stay down, that the death counts will cease, that this illness will be somehow brought to an end, and that the vaccination process can begin soon. Thank you for watching over our community. Lord, we pray for our first responders that continue to also deal with COVID as well as so many other things. Please keep them safe during this holiday season. Be with our servicemen and women wherever they are scattered all over the world. Bring them home safely ultimately. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together to transact county business and ask for wisdom and direction in each matter, Lord, whether it be large or small. We thank you for the decision process that is going on here today. We thank you for the input of our citizens. We thank you for the commissioners and the Commissioners' Court, and for our employees, Lord. We just ask your guidance and blessing upon this agenda, and we turn it over to you now in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul needs some of you out there. All right, welcome to our second regular meeting of the month of November. Today is the 23rd of November, 2020, just after 9:00 a.m. Item number one is our public comment time. Anyone here like to address the Commissioners' Court on a non-agenda item? You may, of course, speak on any agenda items when we get to those, but any general comments, this would be a great time. All right, then, we will move into minutes. We have two sets of minutes here. Item number two is going to be our last regular meeting two weeks ago, and then the one after that's going to be regarding the brief meeting that was held last week to canvass the vote. So, item number two, consider and possibly approve minutes from the November 9th, 2020 meeting of the court. That was regular Commissioners' Court meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve that set of minutes is made by Commissioner Applewhite and a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And Commissioner Fitch is out today. He is taking precautionary measures due to the fact that his son unfortunately contracted COVID and came home from college. They believe that they isolated him quickly, but nonetheless, he is tending to business away from us, and we appreciate his precautions. Item number three, consider and possibly approve minutes from the November 13th special meeting of the Commissioners' Court. That was about 10 days ago on a Friday afternoon primarily to canvass the vote.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item number four, let's talk about what roadwork is going on during these cooler days. Commissioner Parker, I'll start on my left.
Okay. We finished up the road on 4315. I say finished it up. We got a little over half of it done that we had, and the other Commissioners sent their trucks and hands out there to help us seal coat that part of it where we wouldn't lose it through the winter. So, we got about a mile and a half of it done week before last, and then last week, we spent all week hauling our route from down on 259, down at Quado Creek. DOT, or the Texas Department of Transportation, sent us our deal week before last, I guess it was. And normally, they give us a year to get our stuff moved, but for some reason or another, this year, they give us 30 days to get everything moved. So, we've all been scrambling trying to get that taken care of.
That is out of the ordinary, isn't it?
Very much. Usually, when we set up our deals, it usually goes from now until the 1st of October next year.
Did they explain why they were doing that?
And I called out there and talked to them. I said, "Am I reading this right?" And they said, "Yes." And I said, "Okay, we'll do what we can do." And so, we're working on it.
If it's free, we hate to lose.
Exactly.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Applewhite.
Well, we, like I said, Jimmy, we helped Jimmy seal coat out there week before last, and then last week, we pushed up in the yard. We was bringing the wrap to us, and I was pushing it up and doing some odd nins, but when you got a lot of people, two people on vacation, it's kind of hard to do a lot. You've got two guys, it's not easy.
Will you be able to get all your wrap within that timeframe?
Other than that, we, you know, we're just, I guess, we got, one, he's, he'll be on vacation and all that. He'll be retiring at the end of January, so we'll be catching up there. Like I said, we got, I guess, we'll have a full crew next week, but as far as now, we don't have, be able to get into something big.
Any more seal coat projects this year? We done with that?
I think we're pretty much done with it, unless it's just spray cover coat or something like that that time of year.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Riddle?
Called wrap. We hauled wrap with the rest, everybody, last week and the week before, patching. This is about all we've done, and like I say, a lot of vacation, time off.
Done with seal coating for the season?
Oh, yeah, a long time ago.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item number five, consider and possibly approve payment of training expenses incurred during the month of December by our newly elected officials that will take office in January. Everybody that comes into office has, seems like, some kind of training that they've got to get done by the end of the year that different entities offer to prepare someone for taking office January 1. There's some training going on down in Tyler, I know of, that Jeff needs to go to. There is, of course, the Commissioners' training that normally would be held at our ag office, but to give a better spread out for everybody, it's going to be in Sulfur Springs this year. So, there's nominal costs, fees, that go along with this. There's mileage that goes along with this, and in the past, I think we've had different attitudes towards this. My recommendation is that the county pay for these expenses of these new incoming officers that are taking office January 1, that have these incidentals, and we can do this on a permanent basis, or I suggest we probably continue to evaluate these, you know, one at a time, depending upon what's required during that particular year, and whether there are other options to postpone those into the new year or not. But I think these are relatively small. I think that it's fair that we pay for these, but that is you all's decision. But if we're going to pay that or not pay that, let's decide that now so that these folks know what to expect as far as turning in expenses or not.
I make a motion. We take care of it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker, then, to pay for training expenses that have to be incurred prior to taking office January 1 by newly elected officials.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. Item number six, seven, and eight all have to do with our project on Highway 1735, the Chapel Hill Road. That is a TechDOT project, but it is a project where the agreement with TechDOT is that the county will pay for right-of-way that needs to be purchased for this project, as well as utilities that need to be relocated for this project. And this is something that was discussed back in 2004, so we have waited a long time for this project, and we want to get started on it. TechDOT is ready to get started, and they are waiting for us to say, "What are we going to do about the purchase of right-of-way?" They are out there, literally as we speak, marking right-of-way with permanent markers out there, and the job of visiting with all 30 of these different landowners, negotiating prices that will be paid to acquire their land that will become part of our right-of-way is a significant process, and it's a process that requires adherence to some fairly rigid laws. And we did this same thing back 10 years ago when we were preparing to build our 14-mile loop. This project is not as large, but nonetheless, it is a significant project. At this time, according to our latest numbers, we have $3,680,000 remaining in a right-of-way fund that was funded back in 2004 with the issuance of bonds. Those bonds were paid off about a year ago. We dipped into that to pay for the Harts Bluff Road project a few years ago, and we used that money to pay a right-of-way consultant to buy the right-of-way, to relocate the utilities, and we had hoped that we would still have enough money in order to take care of this 1735 project. And based on TechDOT estimates, which are somewhere around $2.5 million, to purchase that right-of-way and move those utilities, we believe that we have plenty of money in order to do this. One other significant expense component of this is the utilization of this right-of-way consultant, and as well as a consultant that can help us negotiate with the utility companies on this relocation. I don't have any idea at this time what the expenses related to moving those utilities will be, but I know that there's a water tower, a water storage tank that needs to be purchased, and again, we've got 30, about 30 different landowners in order to accomplish this project. And so, we began this several meetings ago, and the last time that we met, we agree, well, several meetings ago, we agreed to put out a request for qualifications to see what firms had the qualifications, the ability, the knowledge, and the desire to participate in our project. And those packets were opened up here in the last few weeks, and so, I'm, and participating in that project was Barbara, our auditor, and Commissioners Applewhite and Parker. And so, this item is on here today to discuss the responses that we got from the requests for qualifications related to selecting a consultant. And again, the way that a request for qualifications works is, this is not a bid process. This is not a process like we're purchasing, you know, a piece of equipment, or we're hiring somebody to do a landscaping job, but this, these are professional services, and the selection process is based on whether or not they have the ability to do the job, as opposed to who gives you the cheapest price. We don't want to run into a situation where we're making these decisions based on price, and we end up with somebody who really is not qualified for the job. So, the request for qualifications that was prepared by Barbara was very thorough, and we did get, I understand, three responses. So, I'm going to ask each of y'all to give a brief comment on this selection process and tell us what, you know, kind of where we're at. If we're ready to make a selection, that is going to be in the next item. Here, we're just going to discuss these responses and decide if we're ready to move forward with the selection in the next item. So, I'm going to first call on Barbara. Do you have any brief comments? And again, thank you for all the work you did in putting together this request for qualifications and handling the administrative task of collecting those back up and preparing a grading sheet that I know you all use to evaluate these. So, if, do you have any brief comments for us? Please share.
It's important that the public knows that this information was in the Mount Pleasant paper as required. It was published twice, and then we waited the designated period of time before we opened these proposals back. So, I want to make sure that the public knows that everyone had an opportunity to bid on this.
Thank you.
Or to, I'm sorry, it's not a bid, to submit their qualifications.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Parker?
We met, can you remember what the date was, two weeks ago, I guess it was, and went through our scoring process. Appreciate Barbara doing what she did, getting our score sheets ready for us and all, and we sat down and went through each one of the qualification, and were, all of them were good qualifications, but we had one that really stood out, and their score was significantly higher than the other. So, that's, you know, what we've done so far is gone through that.
Did they all, you know, this was a two-pronged process. We were asking for somebody that was capable of making right-of-way purchases in accordance with TechDOT's requirements, as well as helping us with utility relocation. Were all of these able to give you qualifications on their ability to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Applewhite, any comments on there?
I think it went pretty well with all what we had to do, but it was, all in all, went real good.
Okay. These were all companies that had previous experience in doing this? All right. Well, based on what the three of y'all determined with those responses, and there were three responses, is that right? Three, was there three?
There were four responses, and one that we did not proceed with because we didn't feel like their financial situation, their financial condition on their financial statements was not, was not good.
Okay, so they weren't even considered in your evaluation process? So, four total responses?
Yes, and of the three that we looked at in depth, only one of those will do right-of-way appraisal and acquisition, as well as utility relocation.
Yeah. Okay. Are these all Texas companies? Are these nationwide companies, or what?
Some of them are nationwide. The one that we think rose to the top is a local company. Their face office is in Tyler. The other ones have offices in the Dallas or Austin.
San Antone, Austin area, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, before we move on to item seven, are we ready to move to item seven, where we're ready to name somebody and select somebody that we believe is capable?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's make a motion, then, to move forward with the selection of a consulting firm.
Make that motion.
All right. Motion to move on to item number seven to choose a consulting firm is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, item number seven, consider and possibly select a right-of-way consulting firm related to the purchase of right-of-way. Again, this is the first aspect of it. We're talking only about a consultant who is capable of purchasing that right-of-way on our behalf, and in item number eight, we'll talk about a firm that sounds like maybe the same firm that's capable of negotiating utilities relocation. But item number seven, are we ready to select this firm out of the four that submitted responses to handle right-of-way purchases for us? And I'll leave any discussion or motion up to either of you that participated in this process.
I make motion that we accept Lochner as our right-of-way consulting firm.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to select Lochner, L-O-C-H-N-E-R, I believe is that spelling, and they are out of Tyler. They're, one of their offices, I think they have other offices.
Yes, it's second.
All right. Second is made by Commissioner Applewhite for Lochner. Any discussion? Barbara, any comment? You were good with that selection? Okay. All in favor of selecting Lochner for the right-of-way consulting process, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And moving on to item number eight, consider and possibly select a utilities relocation firm also for this project 1735.
Make a motion we accept Lochner.
Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to also select the firm of Lochner, and I guess we could have used two different companies, but it does make sense to me that you've chosen Lochner, who has the ability, and said in their responses that they do both those types of work and are capable of doing that. And they were the only one of the three that you considered that were interested in doing both of those. Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second to select Lochner as our utilities relocation firm consultant on the 1735 project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion was made by Dana, second by Jimmy. And unanimous vote there. All right. One more time, this process being an RFQ, we've now made the selection of the company. We now need to make, we need to enter into negotiations with them and arrive at a fee schedule. Now, this kind of a job, the fees can vary significantly based on what problems they run into or don't run into. For example, as we had on the Loop project, and as we will likely have on this project, you may run into multiple, one, two, you don't know, landowners that don't seem to be able to agree on a sale price for the right-of-way that you're buying from them. And this can become a very antagonistic process. We certainly ran into that on the Loop project, and we were talking about larger parcels, and when you're talking about a landowner having to give up some of his land, sometimes the amount of acreage may not even be necessarily the rub. It may be just the fact that you're encroaching on my property. I don't want to give it up. I don't want to sell it. I don't want to have a freeway this close to my house, or my barn, or whatever it is. And it is possible that negotiations could stall or fail, and you have to enter into condemnation proceedings where you exercise right of eminent domain. My personal hope is we don't have to do that, but at this point, we don't know enough about whether we're going to run into that or not. And so, these fees obviously can go up exponentially if you have to go into condemnation proceedings. Our hope is that a price could be arrived at relatively easy with all 30 of these landowners, but either way, you've got to have a basis upon which to expect how much this process will cost, and I will, obviously, we want to begin this process as quickly as possible. So, are the three of you ready to handle that process of working out some pricing with Lochner?
Yes, sir.
You think we could do that? I'd love to be able to do this a week from today, have a special meeting. I don't know if you can complete it by then, but if you can, can we shoot for a meeting next Monday?
I think we can.
Okay. Well, you do have holidays here, and hopefully, these guys are prepared to lay it all out for you, and may have already done that process, but that is the second part that we have to do. We've made the selection. Now, we're going to agree upon a fee schedule. So, let's tentatively plan on a week from today, Monday at 9:00 a.m., and that'll be the 30th of the month, to discuss pricing on this job. Let's go on to item number nine, consider and possibly approve paying 10% of Five Star's Volunteer Fire Department Tanker Grant. Boy, this is indeed a unique year. This is the second grant that we have had approved by, for one of our, for the benefit of one of our fire departments. And sometimes you can go years, and we've have, in fact, gone years since we had the last grant, but this year, we've done well, and we've managed to score and win another grant. So, who is going to tell us? Commissioner Fitch is not here, and he is, I've explained to you where he is, but he assured me that somebody is going to represent Five Star here and tell us the magnitude of this grant and why it's important that the county provide funding of 10% of this grant, which is required by the grant.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Most of you know me, I'm Marcus Williams. I'm a volunteer member at Five Star Volunteer Fire Department.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you all for your time.
Tap that mic, just make sure it's.
I want to thank y'all for your time, first of all. We've been awarded a grant by Texas Forestry Service. Read this, I wrote it, I read it. This is a 90, 10% grant. The Texas Forestry Service will pay 220,000 toward a new tanker. We have went out and searched quotes from several companies. The new tanker will cost us 255,000. In the past, the county has paid 10% of the cost of these grant trucks. We are asking the county for 10% of the total cost of the tanker, which is $25,000. Five Star Volunteer Fire Department will pay a difference between the two, which comes to $9,500. When we receive our new tanker, Tanker 77, which is a 2011 model 3,000-gallon tanker, will be housed and run out of the Argo Station. So, these funds not only will help our Five Star Volunteer Fire Department, they'll also help our Argo Volunteer Fire Department.
You're going to pass on your old one to Argo?
Yes, sir. It'll be, there's some stuff there, they're all Titus County trucks, but there's some stuff there with how it adds to happen and naming and stuff like that, but it will be at Argo Station. And Mr. Applewhite, what your model truck are y'all running now? Do you know what that truck is?
It's old. It's old. It's, we got one guy that can drive it.
Yeah. It's an old international.
It's really, it's a, it's just a dump truck welded up, made in a tanker.
And the last time we had it at the Chicken House Fire out there, it was leaking, cooling so bad, we didn't know if it'd make it back to the station. So, it's going to be a tremendous help.
Yes.
Not only our department, but Argo as well, getting them a much-needed truck for their station.
How old is the one you'll be passing off to them?
2011 model.
Sounds familiar.
And it was, it was a grant truck as well. At the time, it was Winfield truck. And when Winfield went away, because those trucks are signed to Titus County, we were able to move it to another department, which will be the same thing as what we'll do with it at this point.
Okay. What, describe what one of these looks like. What does a tanker truck look like? And it's based on, is it a Ford, Chevy chassis? What is it?
They're Kenworths. The one they'll be receiving from us is a 2011 model Kenworth 3,000-gallon tanker. It is set up also as a fire apparatus. I mean, it can, it'll support itself and fight a house fire all by itself in the past, too, but generally, the engines are there, and we tie into the engines. The new truck's going to be a 2,000-gallon tanker. It's a single rear axle, which will help with our roads and stuff like that. It's the reason we chose to go with a little bit smaller truck. And it as well will be set up, look just like an engine, except it'll have a larger tank and not as many toolboxes on it. We've reached out to Fault Brothers, who has won our bid. We talked to Pierce, talked to a place out of Sulfur Springs, I can't remember the name, about five companies that we've got quotes on. We went with Fault Brothers, because there's several other tankers, including Tanker 77, that have been proven from that company here in our county that do us a good job. Mr. Parker, some of y'all's Fault Brothers?
Yes, the, our tanker is, the tanker from Tri-Lakes.
Right.
Is from Fault Brother.
They're just proven, that we don't have no trouble out of their equipment, or we haven't in the past. I do know, because I'm a COOPLE as well, the truck that we did receive a bid on from them, the COOPLE has. that COOP has, seemed like we have trouble getting them people down here to take care of problems when we have problems. That's why I personally chose not to go with that company, go with Fault Brothers.
Okay. So the grant is a fixed amount of money, and it's up to you to figure out the most efficient way to spend that money. So you have the choice to choose whoever.
Yes, sir.
Long as it meets the grant specs of what you're buying. Okay. All right, so.
And this truck will be set up to where it can go, if it has to fight a house fire by itself, all the hoses and stuff will be on there, just like the regular engine from Mount Pleasant or any other engine that shows up.
Okay, so the turnkey price for this, you're expecting to be about 255,000?
Yes, sir, that is the quote we have. I was involved in that quote.
And the grant's 220,000?
Yes, sir.
Which leaves.
Because that's what the Forestry Service will pay us.
Okay, so that leaves roughly $35,000 difference. You're asking the county to pay 25,000, which is roughly 10, 10%, but not quite, and then you all will make up the balance of that $3,500 yourself, you said about 9,500 or about $10,000.
Yes, sir, we went with the 10% because that's what the county's done in the past. I mean, we're, we're trying to do some fundraising to get stuff off the ground to raise our 9,500. If the county wanted to pay 15%, you know, that's great, that's up to y'all. We just come to you with what we, what has been done in the past.
We just paid 10% for Tri-Lakes, I think we should do it for Five Star.
Yeah, I don't know that we've, have we ever paid more than 10%?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Not to my knowledge.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we pay the 10%.
Well, congratulations for getting the grant. I mean, that's, that's good news. Anytime we can put down 10% on a, and get 90% given to us, that's probably a pretty good deal.
Yes, sir, and this truck will stay in Titus County. I mean, even if something were to happen to the department, it would just go to a different department. Not that that's going to happen, but you know, it happened with Winfield, so.
Okay. All right, have a motion, Commissioner Riddle, to pay 25,000 or the 10% of the cost of a new tanker for Five Star Volunteer Fire Department?
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye. Marcus, thank you for coming, appreciate that.
Good to meet you, Marcus.
Thank y'all.
Again, congratulations. Item number 10 is consider and possibly approve our quarterly investment report. We began this process here, since Barbara has been here, she's provided you with that quarterly investment report and some of the highlights on that, looking through the, this, this says, this states where all of our balances are invested. You know, the county sits on a pretty good bit of money at any given time, and this spells out, you know, what we're doing with that money, how we're investing it, where we're getting the best return while maintaining absolute safety and security and liquidity. And bottom line here is that this report is in compliance with the investment strategies and the county's investment policy that was approved in January of this year, and the reporting requirements as mandated by the Public Funds Investment Act as amended. So again, this is a process that we put a lot of trust in Barbara, but we've given her some parameters, and it's, it's not different from what we have done in the past, it just spells out what we are doing. And we, the, the financial institutions that we deal with, primarily Guaranty Bank, we are dealing with a bank that's solid and secure and conservative in their decision-making processes, but nonetheless, Barbara has stated there that this report is in compliance, and it looks good to me. It's very detailed, if you choose to ever know where, where our money, our liquid money, our cash sits. It doesn't just sit in an account that doesn't earn interest, and unfortunately, it's not earning a lot of interest. It's down there pretty low, less than 1%, but nonetheless, we do, we do the best that we can. So anyone have a question or a comment for Barbara about this investment report? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion if, when you're ready.
I make a motion.
Motion to approve the quarterly investment reports made by Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of approval of that report, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we are down to item number 11, approve oral and written reports. That has been provided in advance for you by Barbara.
Make a motion we approve our oral and written reports.
Motion to approve, this report is made by Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Barbara, thank you for getting this to us in advance, that does help, or this process is working well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I'll have that page for you to sign here momentarily. The next item, 12, is consider and possibly approve our treasurer's report, which Cheryl has provided for you as well.
Make that motion.
And motion to approve Cheryl's treasurer report is made by Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
With a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's those two forms for your signature. All right, moving on to budget amendments, we have a few this time. Okay, this is going to be the second, third, and fourth budget amendment of this new year. Let me run down these for you. Budget amendment number 2021-002 relates to Precinct 2, who is moving $11,000 out of road oil budget for the purchase of the front-end loader attachment assembly for his tractor that they own. $11,000 out of his road oil, reducing budgeted monies available for that material and utilizing 11,000 of it for this front-end loader for his tractor. The next item is number 2021-003, relates to the sheriff's office and the use of their commissary funds, where they make money selling products to inmates. This was actually an item that was approved last year, so it was in the previous budget year, but it's just now being paid for. So this was a budget, that budget amendment that previously approved this was back in 20, back in July, for a new camera system for the jail at a cost of $41,450. $15,000 of it was paid from, was, was to be paid out of the commissary fund, and the remaining $26,000 from the sheriff's maintenance fund. The system wasn't completed until just this month. Therefore, the budget amendment is designed to allow payment this year, which is the 20, 20-2021 year rather than the previous year. And then the final budget amendment is 2021-004, relates to Commissioner Applewhite's Precinct 3. We are increasing his rental expense capabilities by $7,500 and reducing road materials also by $7,500 to enable him to rent some equipment. Those are the three budget amendments. Any questions or comments or motions when you're ready?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve budget amendments 2, 3, and 4 are made by Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any questions? All in favor of approval of those three budget amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, sign pay orders and approve bill payment.
Make a motion to pay a bill.
Motion to pay said bills, Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I've got accounts payable runs here. It looks like everybody has signed off. Oh, well, no, I have one here that does need your signatures before you leave, so I'm going to pass that down for your review and signature. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 15, closing comments, if any. Let's see here, we're grateful to have a couple of days of holiday, Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, the county offices will be closed, and we're grateful for that. Have a safe and enjoyable holiday season. Keep in mind that folks at home cooped up. Monitor your health, if you're showing any symptoms whatsoever. Might even want to consider going and getting a free test from one of our two testing facilities before everybody gathers up and kids come to town and it's, they're, they're running very quickly, 24 to 48-hour turnaround on these tests. They may get busier as people perhaps utilize those testing facilities more during the holiday season for the reason that I've given to you. I believe I'll get one myself today. Those are still available at Tiger Mart out on the interstate across from Jalapeno Tree, as well as on South Jefferson at Homeboy Sportswear. They've chosen that location. Like, you can drive around the building. I don't think they've been running lines there, and they have been very good to work with. People that have not gotten their results within a 48-hour timeframe that have contacted me, I've gotten ahold of, can't remember the gentleman's last name, Rayon is his first name. He has gotten right on those and has found the glitch and gotten those results to the people. All of the results they are getting within 48 hours, there was just a few people that they had not contacted within that 48 hours, so he believes he's got that problem fixed. What else do I have here? I told you about Commissioner Fitch. We have fantastic things going on around the square. I was here last night with my wife, we took some pictures. The courthouse grounds looks fabulous. We thank, we thank the city of Mount Pleasant for providing that for us. There was quite a few people here last night. I expect not so much where it was a dangerous crowd, but it was a good crowd. People taking advantage of the rides and the carriage that are going on every night of the week, enjoying the lights, taking pictures there. Let's see, what else related to holiday? There's a lot of changes unfortunately in Christmas schedules going on. Unfortunately, the Christmas parade was canceled. That was a decision that really came out of the COVID Advisory Committee that's been working since March. Numbers here locally unfortunately are, are rising back up. We have a pretty good number of people in the hospital. As of Friday, they were approaching what they felt comfortable with. Not only do you have COVID patients in the hospital, you've got sicker people this time of the year, but the space that they've allocated for COVID patients had a couple of spots remaining. Also, problems in ICU when you have COVID patients having to compete with non-COVID patients in ICU. And it's very difficult, if not impossible, for our hospital to transfer patients out of our hospital if they are at a higher level of sickness and need the care of a bigger hospital. It's very difficult to get patients moved because these other out-of-town hospitals are also full. So we're at that kind of critical point here where we really need to continue to be diligent and do whatever we can to keep ourselves and other people well. I think that's all I have. Great, great Christmas season this is going to be here around the square, really looks great. If you haven't seen it, come up here in the evening. Commissioner Riddle, any final comments?
No comment.
All right, Commissioner Applewhite?
I just hope you have a safe and joyous holidays.
Commissioner Parker?
Same thing. And where does anybody contact or find out about the carriage rides and, have, have had a question or two?
Contact the city, because I don't know a real specific answer on that. Call the city of Mount Pleasant, 575-4000. You may be able to talk to James's wife, Candace, in the, James, do you know the answer to that question? Who we would call? Yeah, if you'll call the, call the city offices, 575-4000, ask for the city manager, you'll get Candace Webster there, and she can probably get you a time slot scheduled. They're running, I think, every night. I think these rides are about, about 20 minutes long, and they were being fully utilized. The whole time I was here last night, those horse carriages were running, there's two, two different ones. All right?
That's all I've got.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone in the audience question, comment? Okay. Thank you very much, enjoy your holidays, and we are adjourned with a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.